Binguni na duniani Bali mongundi yengu Ilawewe bwana wangu Mungu amilele Ajaza ye roho yanguna Ninani semeni Akombo aemwana damu Nakumshindi ya shetani Mwilina moyo wangu Bali mongundi yengu Yeye sehe muyangu Nita ingiya hemayake Nasifazake ku Ajaza ye roho yanguna Ninani semeni Akombo aemwana damu Nakumshindi ya shetani Onninani mwingine Ajaza ye roho yanguna Ninani semeni
Praise the Lord and good evening church. We wish to welcome you back again to our Thursday Berean Bible Study. It's a pleasure to have you together with us this evening and we want to appreciate everybody who has taken their time to join us as we share the Word of God. Once again, we continue through the Book of Revelation and I welcome my teammates to introduce themselves.
Amen. Good evening dear viewers. I am very much grateful this wonderful evening for this opportunity that God has given to us. My name is Pastor Peter Shikuku and in turn pastor here at Central. It is my greatest honour just to be here for the God's work. Thank you very much.
Good evening viewers. I'm Beatrice Isieh, a member of GCI Central. I want to thank God for this opportunity to study His Word. I welcome all of you. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening viewers. My name is Fibian Mutio. I welcome to today's Berean Bible Study. Thank you.
Good evening and praise the Lord viewers. We are so grateful to have you in our today's Berean Bible Study. My name is Joyce Mekasingi and I love the Lord so very much. Karibuni Sana.
Amen.
Amen. And my name is Colam Bui. I'm from GCI Thika Road and I invite Sister Beatrice to pray for us as we begin.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, we want to thank you this evening once more, oh God. Thank you for this opportunity to study your word, oh God. Father, we want to thank you and we are praying that you are going to use us as vessels, oh God. Fill us with your word even as we feed your people, oh God. That Lord you will use us because as human beings we have limitations. But we are calling upon your Holy Spirit, oh God, to control this study, oh Jehovah, that what we may speak will come from thee, oh God. I want to thank you and welcome you in our presence, oh God. For we are gathered here in your name and Lord we know that you are in our midst. We thank you Lord and exhort your name and we pray that whatever we are studying today will impact on the lives of many in the world. Because this is the great commission that you left with us. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Yeah, so today we continue from where we left last Thursday and we'll be tackling the Book of Revelation, chapter 5. Again, we said that the Book of Revelation will need a lot of time, so it calls for patience and don't lose us along the way. Let's keep moving together. And on a later note, somebody said the Book of Revelation is hard, but it is very easy to find in the Bible. It is just at the end there. Yeah, so we are going to read the Book of Revelation, chapter 5. I will ask the team to read three verses each, then the last person can finish what will be left. Can start with Shikuku?
Thank you very much. Allow me to read from the Book of Revelation, chapter 5, verse 1 all the way to 3. The Bible says, "Then I saw in the right hand of him who sat on the throne, a scroll with writing on both sides and sealed with seven seals. And I saw a mighty angel proclaiming in a loud voice, 'Who is worthy to break the seals and open the scroll? But no one in heaven, or on earth, or under the earth could open the scroll or even look inside it.'"
"And I began to weep loudly because no one was found worthy to open the scroll or to look into it. And one of the elders said to me, 'Weep no more. Behold, the lion of the tribe of Judah, the root of David, has conquered, has conquered, so that he can open the scroll and its seven seals. And between the throne and the four living creatures and among the elders, I saw a lamp standing, as though it had been slain, with seven horns and with even with seven eyes, which are the seven spirits of God, sent out into all the earth. And he went and took the scroll from the right, from the right hand of him who has seated, who has seated on the throne."
"And when he had taken it, the four living creatures and the twenty-four elders fell down before the lamp. Each one had a harp and they were holding golden bowls full of incense, which are the prayers of the saints. And they sang a new song, 'You are worthy to take the scroll and to open its seals because you were slain and with your blood you purchased men for God, from every tribe and language and people and nation. You have made them to be a kingdom and priests to serve our God, and they will reign on earth.'"
"Then I looked and I heard around the throne and the living creatures and the elders, the voice of many angels, numbering myriads and myriads and myriads of, and thousands of thousands, saying with a loud voice, 'Worthy is the lamp who was slain to receive power and wealth and wisdom and might and honour and glory and blessing.' And I heard every creature in heaven and on earth and under the earth and in the sea and all that is in them saying, 'To him who sits on the throne and to the lamp, be blessing and honour and glory and might forever and ever.'" "And the four living creatures said, 'Amen,' and the elders fell down and worshipped."
Amen. Yeah, so as we said, we tackled chapter 5 today and just as we had started in the fourth chapter, we'll focus on Jesus, who is worthy of our worship. And we saw in chapter, the previous chapter 4, how people worshipped God, the twenty-four elders, and we dwelt on that mainly. And in this fifth chapter, we are going to dwell on two main themes, and that is the scroll and the lamp. And we begin the first verse of chapter 5, as we see God, God is seen holding a scroll and the scroll has seven seals binding it. In those times of old, only the owner of the seals, only the, only the owner of the scroll could open the seals. And so we see the angel of the Lord sending out a message and asking who is worthy to open these seals. And the seals, the scroll contained a detailed account of the judgment that was to come on earth before Jesus Christ would set up his kingdom. And we see John seeing the full seal and I mean seeing the whole picture as it is presented in this. So we find the, the angel of the Lord. We find the, the, the question coming, who is worthy to open this seal? And let me invite the panelists first to discuss about the theories of this book or the theories of the seal and the scroll, or what was contained in this scroll before we even get to who could open it and who was not.
Maybe scholar, if I, if I may just say something before we go to the theories of the book. The same verse that you have read, it says, "And I saw in the right hand of him." You know, why, why is the Bible talking about the right hand of him? And we know God is spirit and we know that he doesn't have human body like we have. And therefore, there is a long word that we use to show when, when God is given some physical characteristics. So you know, he's, sometimes you can say that the hand of the Lord is upon me or the eye of the Lord is upon me just, just to describe what is happening and for even humanity to identify their God. So when it talks about the right hand of God, who was seated on the, on the throne, it's talking about the power of the person who was sitting on that throne. So it begins with an introduction of a God that is mighty and is the one that is seated there.
Thank you Pastor Joyce. Okay, yeah, we also, there are theories that try to explain what this, what was contained in this book or what was this scroll. And if you read the Book of Ezra, chapter 2, verses 8 and 10, the Bible talks of the Book of Wars. And the same is repeated in Revelation, chapter 10, verses 8 to 11. And so we see different theories of people trying to explain what the scroll was or what it contained. Others say it is the Book of Life, which is mentioned in the Book of Revelation. Others say it is a record of the events of the end times. Others even claimed it was the Old Testament. But those are many theories that try to explain what is this scroll that was being held in the right hand of God. And it had seven seals, so maybe we can discuss the seven seals or why seven? Why did it have seven seals, not five, not six, not three? And we see that seven is the number of perfection right from Genesis. And this was just an indication that this seal was perfectly sealed. There is no way it could just open up or be opened up by anyone. And again, we also see that the Roman, in the day, in those old days, the Roman wheels were sealed with seals. And that is why this scroll being an important document was sealed and not only sealed, but sealed with seven, seven seals. So we see one of the elders saying, "An angel sending for the appeal for anyone that is worthy to open this seal or to open the scroll or to break the seals. And one by one they looked and looked and there is no one who could be found worthy to open the seal. And one of the elders comes and says, 'Do not weep, for I have found somebody who is able to open the seal,' and that is the lion from the tribe of Judah." And this is, this was a strong, this was sending a strong signal that no man and no, no angel or no demon was worthy or had the wisdom and knowledge enough to execute the judgment of God. So the only person who could open this seal and send out the judgment to the earth was only the lamp of God. So I welcome my panelists. I don't know whether anybody has something we can contribute.
Okay, thank you Sister Scholar. You had asked us to talk about the theology behind this particular chapter. And there are some few things that I can talk about as far as verse 1, 2, and 3 are concerned. Number one, we are looking at who is holding the throne. And pastor was explaining that is not God, is God, sorry, let me correct myself, is God. And she wanted us to understand that God is not in the, in the physical body that we are in. So we need to bring to understanding of everyone that whoever was holding the scrolls was God. That is number one. And then when this scroll with the seven seals was being held, there was a concern, who could open it? As we see in, in verse 2, there was that concern, who could open it? And I'm looking at the word which has been used in the scripture. The Bible says, "Who is worthy to break the seals and open the scroll?" In other words, there is no any unworthy person who can open the scroll. The scroll has to be opened by a worthy person. And that is why it was a concern in heaven. And then when this angel has this concern, there is that word that comes after, "But no one in heaven or on earth or under the earth." So this one is a declaration that even when we are looking for solutions to our life challenges, we may go under the sea, we will not find anyone. We may go anywhere. People walk. They walk even to countries, I don't know why we have even to get out of our country while God is everywhere. So there was no one that was found. And then there was that even weeping because no one was worthy. Then the only person who was worthy, was found worthy and as you had said, was the lion of the tribe of Judah. And the lion of the tribe of Judah is none other than Jesus Christ himself. Thank you.
Amen. Beatrice, would you want to go first?
I just wanted to echo what Pastor Shikuku was saying. In fact, he has said exactly what I wanted to say. Here we find in, in verse 4, "And I began to weep loudly because no one was found worthy to open the scroll or to look into it." And then a solution is given by one of the twenty-four elders in chapter 5, where he's saying that it's only the lion of Judah who is able to open the scrolls. Then after we continue, we'll find that now there is, the creatures and the saints were singing a new song. And I was just thinking, as I was going through this scripture, I was thinking, there are some things that we have no power over. Things that we, we can only lift them to Jesus, who died for us. Because he's mighty and there is nothing that is impossible with him. You see, he's the only one who is able to open the scroll, meaning he's the almighty. And all the problems that we could be having, he is able to tackle them. Instead of crying and feeling pity on ourselves, we are supposed to give our, our cares to him and he will handle for us. Ours is just to sing a song. Because that is what we can, he can enable us to sing a song. But the rest of the things that may look impossible, I think it's good to live unto him, to deal with them. That's what I would just add.
Amen.
Amen. I wanted to talk about the scroll again. Really, this is a vision or John is seeing something that is, that is happening in heaven. A man is sitting on the throne and then on his right hand, he's holding the scroll. And then we see so many, like Scholar has mentioned here, there are so many theories, about six of them, on what the scroll could be. Why was it difficult for them to really get to, to agree what the scroll is all about? But looking at the description of the scroll, the Bible is saying that it was written both in the front and even in the back. And actually, the word for, for, the Greek word there is Biblion, just the same word we get Biblia or Bible or something like that, which means a scroll. And at that particular time, there was no, there were no books. So definitely people are just getting concerned that they are finding the right definition of this particular thing that the one who was seated on the throne is talking about. And so there is, there is a suggestion that it was just, it was a scroll as it were and it was made of papyrus. And then definitely it is hard for you to write in this, on this side and write at the back when you're using that papyrus as material. So it became very difficult for it to be understood. And then it has all those seals that we have talked about. And I think even, even the view of what is happening there made the creatures and the elders very scared about now what is it all about? What does this, this God, what does God want us to do or to do with this book that he's, that he's holding? And I, I thank you for even pointing out that they found no one, including the twenty-four elders. These are people that are already in heaven, but they are not able to open the scroll. And even the angels, the cherubims and the seraphims, they are not able to open the scroll. Nobody, no creature was able to open the scroll. And therefore, then they find the, the lion of the tribe of Judah and the root of David. This is a messianic title for Jesus Christ, who is the Savior. It's only the lamp that was slain that was able to open the, the scroll. Thank you.
If I can add to what we've been saying, verse 6, it says, "Then I saw a lamp looking as if it had been slain." So also this is talking about salvation, that no one can save apart from Jesus Christ. That is the lamp of God.
Amen.
Amen. I also look at John weeping and I was asking myself, why was it so important that this scroll has to be opened? Sad that nobody is now found to open it and John is weeping and very sad that it is not worthy to be opened. And this is because the judgment that was going to be rolled out was going to write very many things that had been done wrongly on earth. It was going to vindicate the righteous who had been maybe accused of things maybe they had not done. The people who had died because of the gospel. And so many things that had been done wrong previously needed to be done right or to be righted. And the earth was going even to be thwarted. So it was important that this moment comes and also it was going to begin the reign of Jesus Christ even here on earth. So it was very important that this scroll be opened because it was going to open us up to an eternity. So we see the elders again comforting John and telling them there is one person who has been found and that is Jesus Christ. And after that, we see, we see in verse, in verse 6 and 7, Jesus being introduced as a lamp and he's sitting at the center of the throne. And of the throne and he's presented with seven horns, which signify power and strength. And with seven eyes, which symbolize the wisdom of God, and seven spirits, which is a symbolism of the Holy Spirit. And when, after that, we see three hymns introduced into this, into this chapter. And I will welcome my panelists to, Peter looks like he really wants to go.
Okay.
Before I even say what they will do.
I want, I want to talk, but not where you have reached. I just want to take us back, Kido Go, because as we talk about this, remember we're talking about a futuristic event. But again, this has to help us as the church today, even as we walk the journey of faith. So one thing that I want to add, because I know very well that in the life we live as believers, we also experience some tough things in life that makes us to reach at a point of crying. We are looking at a whole apostle of God, John, weeping because there was no one found to open the scroll. And I love how one elder came out to say that, "Do not weep. See the lion of the tribe of Judah, the root of David." So one thing that I wanted to emphasize there, that you who is watching, me who is seated here and every other person who could be going through a tough time, you are closing yourself in a room and busy crying and weeping. Who can take away the burden of, the burden that I have? Who can wipe my tears? We are here to point to you one, only one, and that is the lion of the tribe of Judah. And that is the root of, the root of David. Jesus Christ himself is able. Just like Sister Fibian was saying, that is only able, is the only one who is able to save us. So even those who are not born again, there is no any other place you can look for salvation. Actually pastors could be weeping, looking at how you are dying in sin. And the question is, who can save this particular person? We are here to point to you one Savior, Jesus Christ. He's the only one who is, who is able to save us here on earth and is also able to open the scroll in heaven. Thank you.
Amen. Amen. Yeah, as Peter was talking, I remembered, if you look through the Book of Revelation, Jesus is first, is represented in two ways, first as a lamp and also as a lion. And we know that when Jesus Christ came the first time on earth, he came as a lamp. And he was the sacrificial lamb who took away the sins of the world, who took away our sins. And in this second, in his second coming, he's coming back as a lion, so mighty, so powerful and with a lot of authority and a lot, a lot of power from God. And at this time, he'll be, he'll be coming to pass judgment on the world, on the earth and, yeah, and on the world. And because he only conquered sin, he only conquered death, he even conquered hell and Satan and the demons. And only him can be entrusted with this work of passing on the judgment to the world. So yeah, that, thank you for that Pastor Peter.
Sure, sure.
Yes, so as we are saying, we see, we see the hymns as, as, as Jesus takes the book or the scroll to open the seals of the scroll, we see the elders and the four creatures all bowing down prostrate and worshiping, and worshiping the lamp of God. And this shows that the worship, worshiping the lamp of God again, as we, as we said when we were beginning and as we were handling chapter 4, that worshiping the lamp of God is the key theme in the Book of Revelation. It is said that when we get into heaven, we will not have any other business. We will be worshiping and worshiping God. And I remember Pastor Joyce saying in one of the sessions that worship is very important to God. He actually longs for us to worship. You, you cannot long for something that is not important or something that is not good. And he can do so many other things for him, for us and for the world, but he cannot worship himself. So it is something that is very, very critical in the life of a believer, that continue worship and bowing before God. So yeah, thank you. Welcome the team. We can go through the hymns. We can go through the hymns that are presented in the book of uh in the fifth chapter, as we discuss further on worshiping Jesus as the Lamb of God.
Okay, um I love the part where you ended, where Jesus has now taken the scroll and the four living creatures and the twenty-four elders fell down before the lamb. And each, each of them, the twenty-four elders and the four creatures, each of them was holding a harp and golden bowls full of incense. And then the Bible tells us what that was. And these are the prayers of the saints. I think it's really, really so comforting to know that there are, there are, there are creatures, there are elders, there are angels that are carrying our prayers before the presence of the Father. Let me ask somebody else to continue.
Eh 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 amen, Pastor, I think um I'm I'm really encouraged with that. Not many times when we pray and we are under pressure, we feel like our prayers are just getting lost in the atmosphere and that these prayers don't go to God. Remember, dear believers and dear viewers, when we are born again and we are God's children, no any dustbin is in heaven. Our prayers are carried. Because it is, the Bible is very clear that each one had a harp and they were holding golden bowls full of incense. These were prayers of God's people, God's people. So as long as you are a God's person and you are praying, remember that your prayers are carried before God. And verse nine now is bringing us to a point where they are saying, "And they sang a new song," saying, there is a point there. Let me stop there. Yes.
Okay, let let me just continue from where you have stopped. Before I got interrupted, I just wanted to to talk about the the bowing down and the falling down of the elders and the en- and 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 the angels. And even with the things that they were carrying. And just after that, they are given a hymn. You know, or John is uh is uh has has a revelation of a hymn. And what was the hymn talking about? It's uh it's it's a, it's a worship of the of the e- elders and the angels and it says, "Worthy are you to take the scroll and to open its seals." So every revelation of God or every understanding that the heavenly beings uh received, they never just got the understanding or the wisdom and they felt, wow, at least we have an additional knowledge of these things. Everything that was revealed to them led them to worship. And I don't know even for us who are seated here and those who, those of you who are watching us online, when God reveals something, when there's an elevation, when that problem that Shikuku talked about, you don't know how to handle a situation and then all of a sudden, somebody appears who is able to to handle your situation, what do you do? Sometimes we jump and we look for people to give testimonies and 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 all that. But we see something different from the heavenly beings. Before they could even talk about it or they they they, you know, they enjoy it, they fell down and worshipped the Lord.
Sure.
So it's a reminder for us that everything that has been done to us should lead us to worship. And so that was the first, first hymn by the angels and the twenty-four elders.
Yeah, and also maybe the, okay, I think Fabian wants something.
Oh, okay, yeah, uh if I may add, even from the first hymn, uh I see the mission of God being accomplished and that is to redeem the whole world. We see uh uh in verse, in verse nine, let let's say it's B, "Because you were slain and with your blood you purchased men of for God from every tribe and language and people and nation." So this is a call or it's a reminder for us that the Lord died for everyone.
True.
All of them, they were coming to worship and they are redeemed by the blood of Jesus. So even us as the body of Christ, when we are going out there to reach out to people, it's for everyone. The gospel is for everyone. So that is a reminder that the Lord died for everyone in the world. Thank you.
Amen. Yes, Sister Beatrice?
Yeah, just to concur with what Sister Fabian is saying. Uh by God sent in Jesus Christ to die for our sins or to purchase for us our salvation, he did not just do that to save us from sin alone, but he expects us to continue proclaiming his word, going out there to call other people to come unto him and serve him. So it's not just enough to receive the salvation and remain there. God had a purpose of making sure that we eh we help him in maintaining the order in the world by calling upon other people to come and serve him. Amen.
Amen. Yeah, so as we look at verse eleven and twelve, we also see a second hymn uh that was sung by all the angels. And many, the Bible says that as he took the scroll, many angels joined up in a song. And when the things that they praised God for, we see some very key attributes that they 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 claimed or they proclaimed as they sang out this song. And they said that the 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 lamb has power, has riches, has wisdom, has might, has honor, has glory and her and and praise. He is the one who is worthy to receive all these things from us. So as we keep saying, the things, the all the power, the the powerful things that we feel we could, we we have in life or in this world, they are nothing compared to the power that is ascribed to Jesus, who is the Lamb of God. All the riches that we could have are nothing compared to the riches that are ascribed to the Lamb of God. And he is the Lamb of God who took away the sins of the world and he saved us by the precious blood of Jesus Christ. And this just a, it's just marvelous for any believer. God has done, I mean, Jesus took up all this for us and for sure, we deserve to give him our song, our praise, our dance, even as we thank him for what he has done for us. Amen.
Yes.
Don't know whether anyone has anything to add or we can take the third hymn.
Uh before we go to third hymn, uh it is good, you you you've mentioned them uh in the in the second hymns. By the way, we are talking about uh hymns here and the first hymn is in verse nine. The second hymn is in verse twelve and then the third one will come uh in verse thirteen. But each hymn has a powerful message for the body of Christ. And this is also another way of looking at our choice of songs that we use in the church. The songs should be in a position to communicate and to centralize on Jesus Christ as the Lamb of God. Not just any song that people are using to worship God. Because when I look at the first hymn, the first hymn, I'm just going back there, then I come to the second one and then I release. The first hymn, to me, on 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 my side, I'm looking at an opportunity that has been made available to everyone, from every culture, from every race, from every country, from every community, even from a home and even in a home, from every individual member of that home. The word of God should be shared. But in this second one, I'm looking at seven powerful things. These are some of the things that here on earth, people are really struggling to achieve. People are struggling to achieve riches, it is good. People are struggling to have wisdom. People want to have strength. People want to have honor, glory and praises because each and everyone, when you do something, you want people to praise you, you are also looking for honor on all these things. But in this kind of second hymn, we are looking at a recognition of the Lamb, who is worthy and is the only one. Remember, not just worthy, but is worthy at the same time he was slain. Meaning that he is the only one who has the power now to receive all these seven attributes. And the seven attributes, remember, number one is power, number two is wealth, number three is wisdom, four is strength, five is honor, seven is glory, uh six is glory, sorry, and then the seventh one is praise. Only Jesus is worthy to receive them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Shikuku, for that understanding. Uh looking at the hymns that I know we've not talked about the the third hymn and probably we can just mention it in verse number thirteen. And it is done by by all creatures. Um verse thirteen says, "And I heard every creature in heaven and on earth and under the earth and in the sea and all that is in them saying, to him who sits on the on the throne and to the lamb, he uh sorry, be blessing and honor and glory and might forever and ever." So going back to the, to hymn number one, Ama Nyimbo, Wimbo Wa Kwanzaa. Because maybe we are saying hymn and you don't know what we are talking about for us who are in Kenya and who know Swahili, Niwimbo. So the first song or the first hymn is uh is is showing how God is worthy to take the scroll and open it.
True.
The second hymn is talking about the Lamb that was slain to receive power and wealth and all that that Shikuku has talked about. This is the person who was slain or 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 Jesus who was slain, the Lamb that was slain, so that you and myself can attain salvation. The third hymn is about uh it is being sung by all creation. Each one of them and says, Jesus is sitting, I mean, is sitting on the throne. I mean, God is sitting on the throne and also the Lamb. So when I look at these songs, I'm I'm just worried about the songs that we sing to our God today.
Sure.
I don't know what songs we sing today, and I really am not here to judge anyone or anything. But I'm asking myself as Joyce, which song do you sing to the Lord? Does it reflect on Christ? It's some, sometimes I I I I listen to songs and I, I don't know, I find no meaning in them and I just shut my mouth. Because really, there is nothing we are, we are telling God, that that song particularly is not reflecting on God. So there is no purpose of singing that song and saying we are singing it to the Lord and it has no God in them. Some of the songs, we don't even get to know what they are saying. You only hear one Jesus in the middle and one Jesus at the end, the rest of the things we don't get to hear. But we can borrow from Revelation, chapter five, and borrow the songs that are being sung there, they are centered on Christ. And my emphasis is that our worship should center on Christ. We are not, we are not going to sing songs to entertain ourselves. Just because every, every hit song has come to the to to your knowledge, then you bring it to the pulpit. Let let's think about it. And let's not even blame the worship team, all of us are worshippers. But even for the worship team, find out if that song that you're introducing to the church is centered on Christ. So that we can borrow something from the the cre- the creation that is in heaven and how they are worshiping the Lord. Thank you.
Yeah, as you are responding, I, it it takes me back to the Book of Philippians, chapter two, verse ten and eleven, where the Bible says that "Every knee shall bow and every tongue shall confess that Jesus is Lord." And when we see in verse thirteen, this, this is a hymn that is raised or is sung by every creature in heaven and on earth. Remember at this point, as we say, the church has been ruptured, so the church is in heaven. And so the people who are remaining on earth are technically the non-believers. So before the believers were even uh ruptured to heaven, they had already uh their knees had bowed and their tongues had confessed that Jesus Christ is Lord. But at this point, we see an uh a fulfillment of Philippians, chapter two, verse uh verse ten to eleven, "That every knee will bow in heaven and on earth." So even those unbelievers who decl- who who declined to bow back then and they refused to confess that Jesus is Lord, at this point, they are, they are uh, they are compelled to honor God. They are compelled to honor Jesus Christ and to say that he is worthy to receive praise and honor and glory and power forever and ever. And so this is some sort of a universal homage to the Father and to the Son, and it is an assured fact. So whether you claim it now or you choose to claim it at that point, the fact that it is all of us at one point, we will bow down, our knees will bow and our tongues will confess that Jesus Christ is Lord. We'd rather choose to do it now and not then, in Jesus' name. Amen, so Karibuni, my team? I don't know whether anyone has anything else or?
Yes, I still have an uh a a point to just keep on emphasizing. Because we, every man of God, every minister of the gospel and minister of the gospel, gospel is not limited to the word alone. Remember, gospel is the good news and the good news is centering on Jesus Christ. And that's why we have said that even the songs that we choose to sing, it is my appeal to all of us that we need to seek God. We need to seek God that each and every time God minister to us is will. So that as we do his work, our good news or which is called gospel should be a gospel that brings out the Lamb who was slain, and that is Jesus Christ. So that in everything that we are doing, we do in honor of him. Remember, chapter four was dwelling much on the worship that was done to God. Chapter five is bringing the Christ, the savior of the world. And just as we have said, she has read the Book of Philippians, eh chapter two, verse ten to eleven. Every knee, every knee, every knee. So it is wake up, call to you, listener, wherever you are, that if you've never confessed Jesus as your personal savior, this is an opportunity. Because every knee shall bow and every tongue shall confess about Jesus Christ as the savior. Thank you very much.
Amen. Amen. Yes, Beatrice?
We see John being ushered into the spirit of the Lord and he was able to see what was happening in heaven. And we have seen that through the Book of Revelation, what was revealed to him. And we realize that praise and worship is the chief activity that happens for eternity. And therefore, we can start that now so that, because whatever he showed that is is the foretest of what will happen. And we can start now worshiping God in spirit and in truth. So that we may not just be like what I normally hear out there. Somebody just forms a song and maybe just says, this is the dance, in dance yakarisa and repeats the same word so many times. Because maybe the spirit of God is not leading them on what to speak and whom to worship. Because I wish such a person would just say eh praise be to God, who is the almighty, who has all the wisdom and all that that we have seen here, be blessed.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor, eh thank you, Sister Beatrice. Um Sister Fabian?
Yeah, if I may add, verse fourteen says, "The four living creatures said amen and the elders fell down and worshipped." I I see humility here and the knowledge of who God is by falling down and worshiping. It's like declaring that God is worthy, uh is able, is all-powerful and just giving him the 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 honor he he needs. So I I'm just seeing the knowledge of who they are worshiping and the humility in them as they worship. Thank you.
Pastor Joyce, your closing remarks?
Oh, my closing remarks, uh I would just go back to what I had said earlier, that worship should be centered upon the Lamb of God, the Lamb that was slain or for this matter, upon Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen, so thank you very much, our viewers and the church out there. We've been discussing about the scroll and the Lamb who was worthy to open the scroll and all the beautiful things that can be said in song and in dance and in hymns just to glorify and to offer him the praise that he deserves from us. And again, we said this scroll is sealed with seven seals. And the scroll is not completely opened until the the last seal is is eh is broken. And from next Thursday, we'll be looking at the seals and how they were opened one by one up to seven, up to the seventh seal and what kind of judgment came upon uh the earth as each seal was opened. So please join us again next Sunday, uh next Thursday, sorry. We'll be happy to have you uh with us again as we go through the seals one by one and get to understand what will happen, the things that must happen, that is what Pastor Shikuku tells us. These are the things that must happen. And so how, what will the, uh what judgment will be rolled upon the earth at that point? So thank you again for joining us. I will welcome Pastor Joyce to close for us with a word of prayer. As she prays for anybody who feels you do not want to wait until the last, uh the church has been ruptured and it is now time for judgment for you to confess or to na- or to kneel down or to proclaim with your tongue that Jesus Christ is Lord. You have a chance now and it is better you use it now and not then. Karibu, Pastor Joyce?
Amen. So if you're there, you can just say, "Lord Jesus, I know that you are the savior of the world and I acknowledge you this particular day. Come into my life and reign in my heart. Baptize me with the Holy Spirit that you had promised. In Jesus' name we pray, amen." So Father, we pray for anyone that has said that brief prayer and we pray that King of Glory, that you will reach out unto them and minister to them. And Father, I pray that any of uh in in any of those people, Lord, that you will send forth your your Holy Spirit upon their lives to that you will send forth your Holy Spirit upon their lives to dwell in them and even to help them to walk the journey of salvation, which we know has mountains and hills and valleys. And we pray that, Lord, even on rocky grounds, you're going to help them to continue with the work. I pray that you bless our viewers wherever they are, oh God. May they identify with this word or Jehovah God and even act upon the word that they have heard today. Thank you, Father, even for the ministers who have been here. We pray that, Lord, you will extend your blessings upon us and even upon our media department. For this, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Shalom, shalom.
Amen.
Hello viewers, thank you so much for tuning in today. It's our prayer that you have been nourished and edified. Remember, this service is not complete without giving. To do so, use our paybill number 844632, account number, offering, or type, or shipfold redemption, or any other. You can also use our Equity Bank account number 1080296849538. Account name, Nairobi Gospel Centre International. In need of prayers, counseling, or inquiries, reach out to us on 0725 255 941 or 0734 662 577. May our good Lord richly bless you and keep you. May he cause his face to shine upon you now and forevermore.